Hey, John, can you hear me?
I can.
Okay, great.
Sure. All right, I've got six thirty on my watch. I'd like to call the Village of Cottage Grove Village Board of Trustees meeting to order on Monday, April nineteenth. It is six thirty and we do have what looks to like to be a quorum, but we'll confirm that. The meeting is being held via Zoom. We are recording this. The Zoom link is at the top of the agenda. For for those that choose to do it through an audio, there's a phone number as well as a meeting ID as well on the top of the agenda. Lisa, can we just do a quick roll call, please?
Sure. Alan?
President.
Limber?
Present.
Murphy?
Present.
Bradcliffe?
Here.
Valencia?
Present.
Vanderweldy?
Present.
And Williams.
Uh, present. All right, we have a quorum. The agenda was properly posted. We'll start with a pledge of allegiance. So please find a flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all. All right. Item four is public appearances, public's opportunity to speak. I am little ask them. If you do want to speak, please share your name, your address, and hold your comments to no more than three minutes, just in case we have a number of folks who would like to speak. So with that, I will pause and allow someone, anyone to find the unmute and uh, to please feel free to speak up. All right. We'll move on then. Item five is discuss and consider the meeting minutes from our regular village board meeting from April fifth. Any questions, comments, or edits, or a motion to approve?
I move to approve the minutes from our last meeting.
All right, thanks, Sarah. Is there a second? Thank you, Troy. Motion second, any further discussion? Having heard none, all those in favor?
Aye.
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 Anybody opposed? Anybody abstaining? Motion carries. Uh, item six is unfinished business. The first item there is just an update on fire EMS study, RFP process. Matt, I know you got, you do have an update, so I'll let you chime in and share what you know.
Sure, thanks, John. So I I think everyone's been updated as far as seeing the emails go up, but I'll just kind of run through things a little bit. Um, the Deer Go VMS Commission did, they did end up approving releasing the RFP with a few minor changes, and I'll just run through those quickly. Town Chairman Hampton asked to have service options without partnership added under the section Planning for Growth. Um, so now that now reads evaluate service options that include cooperative efforts with new municipal partners as well as service options without partnerships. Other than that, it was a the commission asked that consultants be given four weeks to respond. Uh, they wanted Commission Chair Greg Frutiger to be added as one of the people who will directly receive the proposals via email. And then finally, they added a requirement for hard copies of the proposals to be delivered. While I'm making these changes, I released RFP to the list of seven consultants and organizations that that through my research and through working with the Joint Chiefs that had come up. And I also sent that list of these consultants to our Joint Chiefs as well as the the three chief elected officials for the partnering communities, um, just to let them see who it went to and also with the to let them know that certainly any, if anyone has any ideas of other firms to send this to, we'd be happy to do that as well. So I'm happy to answer any questions, but that's kind of the the summary where it's at right now that went out on Friday.
I I think there's one other addition if I can, Matt. Uh, under planning and growth, uh, one of the members, I believe, Chris Hampton wanted to know what happens if Button Springs or the town of Deerfield were to go away. We should make that part of the study, and I thought that was approved. They go away, they just continue the the contract.
Yeah, that that was the the language, um, service options without partnerships.
Okay, okay.
Yeah.
Any other questions for Matt? Otherwise, it's a first step in supporting both these services as particularly as the village continues to grow at a fairly rapid pace, um, to ensure that they have everything they need. So uh, as this board is discussed at length. So I think that's a a good thing, and it's also nice to have a number of the parties involved, and I think that's also a good thing as well. So all right, thanks, Matt. Next item then is discuss and consider an offer to purchase from J E K C R E L L C for a portion of Lot Two in the Commerce Park. I think there was a memo in the packet, and I see Tom and Kyle are on on the line as well, and certain was Rick and Matt was involved in this too. So I don't know if you want to summarize what you put together.
Sure, actually, it was Tom and Tom and Kyle, so we can let them summarize that, and it has been reviewed by legal, so Rick may um, may want to chirp in as well.
All right, Tom, please.
Hi, John and everybody. Um, so as Matt said, we received the signed offer from um, J E K C R E, um, which we had previously presented, I believe, at the April fifth, uh, board meeting. The project that they're looking at, just to bring everybody up to speed, is it's a fifteen thousand square foot retail and professional services building at the um, be the northeast corner of Highway N and Limestone Pass. It's about a two point seven five acre site, so all um, all the terms and conditions that are in the offer that they signed, as we, same as we had previously discussed on um, April. So uh, basically, um, the terms is previously discussed, it's six hundred thousand for the site. They are looking for a three hundred thousand dollar credit at closing. Um, another hundred and twenty five thousand dollar payment or credit when they have their first certificate of occupancy, so when they do have their tenants lined up, and then a pay as you go, um, three hundred thousand dollar tip incentive in exchange for um, a guaranteeing of a four million dollar development on the site. So um, again, all these terms and conditions were as previously discussed. You know, as your agent, um, I think these um, are are in line um with a with a market deal, and and we recommend um, approval of the offer. And I can answer any questions anybody has.
Any board members have any questions or comments? Just think, uh, just a comment, I think this is going to be a nice addition to the village, offering some additional services uh, to the community, particularly as that side of town continues to grow. And we've we've been looking for some retail and this type of development along and for a while, and it looks like it's now finally coming to fruition. So that's exciting.
Um, I'll make a motion to approve the offer to purchase from J E K C R E L L C for a portion of Lot Two and Commerce Park as noted in our packet.
I'll second that. All right, thanks, Melissa, and thanks, Jeff. Uh, motion second, any further discussion? Having heard none, all those in favor?
Aye.
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 Anybody opposed? Anyone abstaining? Motion carries. Thanks, Tom. Thanks, Kyle, for jumping on with us.
Yep, thank you, everybody. Have a great night.
All right, uh, moving then on, we jump right into uh, reports from village boards, commissions, and committees, uh, starting with Public Works and Properties. So that'll be me. We met on April sixth, and JJ will keep me honest on this uh, as well. Again, got an update on the Drummond Bike Path. Uh, RFP is getting close to going out, or probably is already. MSA and Kevin have done a, oh, again, lifting to get all the documents ready for uh, the grant for the DOT grant, uh, support that projects. Again, another exciting project for the village. There is uh, there's two, it's two phases, one for the pro, the bike project and the other for Clark Street. And we're working with the property owner to do some stormwater in uh, pond, and that was still up in the air, at least as of that meeting, as far as whether or not that was going to get all sorted out. There was a bit of discussion about that, so I think discussions went subsequent to the follow down subsequent to that, and JJ and Matt probably can update us on those pieces. The BB and Bus Road Project, um, that one also going out for for bids soon. Um, and again, that's to support the growth with the new elementary school out in that area. Um, so again, it's exciting growth on that end of our little village. We um talked about the um some stone removals. There was a, there was a citizen uh, who was disputing some charges on a property that they owned uh, for stone removal. There were some complaints. There was really not a lot to to do there. It's in our ordinances and and certainly listen to the citizen and uh, we proved not changing that uh, that fee. Discuss the road paving um, and maintenance plan for twenty twenty one. Uh, JJ and and crew came up with a a decent pet, decent plan for our limited funds, although we've we've been squirreling way each year a little bit more uh, to continue to maintain our roads. Initial discussion about Oak Street and because that's in our twenty twenty two repaving plan, uh, it's a significant road. It's very wide, as everybody knows. Uh, just talking about, you know, how maybe we can do some uh, striping or some way of actually maybe doing a ped bike path along there. Uh, because there is no sidewalk uh, on that street, and because it's so wide, there might be some creative things we can do there. So Kevin and JJ, we're gonna kind of uh, think about that and then come back to the committee with some ideas. Again, that's not until uh, next year. Update on the uh, Village Hall Parking Lots. Uh, we were planned slated to repay that this year, but with the facilities um study, we're going to hold off on that uh, for a bit. Just to ensure that if if they say to that the study came back and we had to add on part of the building, we'd be tearing up uh, brand new asphalt, so that'd be silly. So we'll see what that, the facilities study comes back with and then proceed accordingly. Talked about the rain barrel uh, sale as one of our sustainability programs. Um, that'll be coming up. Um, they're already available and people are purchasing, so it's a robust, actually. Uh, and very encouraging there, and they will be available for viewing, I think, this weekend at Abiding Shepherd. He's Heidi's nodding, so thank you, Heidi. So that's exciting. Went through the engineer's report, uh, as well as director's report there. Touched again on, you know, the the in-depth annual report. And all the things that DNR is now requesting, and so JJ dove in a little bit there on those. And we may have, we have a potentially a special meeting for consideration of the BB and Bus Road Award recommendation because of the timing to keep that project moving along so that it's done this once by the time school starts. So we threw out a date of uh, the twenty sixth or twenty seventh, and we're still of April, April is still starting to sort that out. Uh, JJ, anything I missed?
I don't know. I think you uh, I think you nailed everything there.
All right.
I had a question. I have one.
Sure.
Um, with the rain barrel sale, are there like, it seemed like there's been a lot of good response to it. Do we have enough funds to, like, do we plan enough for all this uh, outpouring, so there's enough uh, funds for the discount?
Yes. So far, we're we're doing good, and we're still in good shape, but uh, we have to have, I think, half the village buy one for me to be worried. So yes, I think we're in good shape.
That would be a good problem to have then. Um, the other question I had, have we had a lot of orders from outside of the village?
Well, I feel like I'm stealing Heidi's thunder right now, but I believe currently we're at three from outside of the village.
Okay. Well, good. Okay. Um, and I uh, just on your, on the West Oak Street, I would love if there was some sort of walking path or something or sidewalk. So just put my two cents in there.
Well, I'll I'll expound on that a little bit, John, and the committee gave us some direction, and Kevin and I met today and discussed it, so uh, probably not at a special meeting next week, John, but the the normal public works meeting will have some some options we talked through today, and Kevin's team is working on, so we've we've got some ideas to present to the committee.
Yeah, it really presents some, a nice opportunity because it's such a wide street to take advantage of that, since we're going to be redoing it. Sorry, Melissa, go ahead.
No, that's okay. I um, I thought when I was listening in a little bit to the public works meeting, you guys had mentioned something about Ridge Street instead of Oak Street.
That was me just kind of trying to pick the committee brain here early in the uh, financial management plan and budgeting talks to see where everybody stood, but um, the impression I got was let's talk about both of them and maybe move the years around type of thing, but uh, that both are still a priority, so. Well, we'll be, I I suppose they'll both probably stay on the agenda right through the budget season at Public Works.
All right. Thanks, JJ. Thanks, Melissa. We'll move right over to Melissa for the Library Planning Committee.
Um, April seventh feels like years ago. Um, we met with Ellers and uh, Matt was there also, and we reviewed the possible impacts of the library capital and operating expenses on the financial management plan. But we didn't really get into like, if the numbers were off, so that we we didn't really get specifics. But it gives the committee a better understanding of what the village can handle going forward and um, what fundraising uh, might need to be done. Um, and so we're meeting with the Friends of Cottage Grove um, next month to um, understand better about the fundraising uh, capabilities there too. And that meeting is May fifth.
Thanks, Melissa. Any questions for Melissa?
I I'm just curious what kind of fundraising you're looking at uh, to get this off the ground.
Yeah, we we uh, we're interested to find out that too, and so we'll we'll know more um, when we meet with the friends. I mean, we won't, we don't have specifics, just because uh, like a feasibility study um, can help determine how much um, a and and municipality or a community has um, avail, like available to fundraise from type of thing. But what we're putting together gives a much better financial sense of what our community can do and what the village can do going forward. And so when we do present in the summer, we'll have much better numbers to work from. So I I wish I could give you more specifics right now, but we're we're still gathering it all to put it in a nice tidy package.
Right, thank you.
Yeah.
All right, uh, moving then down to Community Development Authority, Jeff?
Yeah, we met on Monday, April twelfth um, at five thirty PM. The only focus was just to look at, to continue the uh, marketing project discussion, and what it was was just I think three or four mockups of different ideas for um, our logo. And then we asked them to go back and do some more adjustments on them, and they did send those out. Um, and then Aaron had sent them out asking people to rank them. Um, and I believe probably, I'm guessing, at the next CDA or the next village meeting, I'm not certain where they'll just bring those forward to you guys for review and about, uh, am I correct on that, Aaron?
Yeah, I think we had said uh, the next board meeting, so that first meeting in May.
Okay, so you can anticipate that coming down the pipe, guys. They're really good. I mean, I looked at, I I would take any of the ones they sent, but I ranked three, three of them as my top three, so. It's it's exciting to see something different. So uh, the next meeting will be the second Monday of May at five thirty.
All right, thanks, Jeff. Any questions for Jeff? All right, we'll move right to uh, ad hoc sustainability committee. Heidi, you want to take it away for us?
Sure, thank you. Uh, we met on the thirteenth, and uh, the biggest thing we have um, a year ago, we were planning our initial kickoff event, which was going to be a cleanup the Grove, and we had to postpone it, of course. So uh, now we get to have our kickoff event for Sustainability Committee with a cleanup the Grove event. It's coming up this Saturday in celebration of Earth Day. Uh, bags and gloves will be at the village parks, and we're inviting residents to uh, clean up public spaces uh, across the community. I saw a lot of, it was a little breezy today on trash day, so there's a little bit blowing around in my neighborhood. Uh, so residents then can just uh, pick up the supplies they need at the parks and uh, start cleaning on Saturday. Uh, other things we have in progress, uh, the solar ordinance, uh, kind of investigating alternate fuel options, um, additional recycling info, um, recyclable items, and um, different options uh, for people that might be interested in weekly recycling to kind of figure out how we can uh, improve our recycling system, also working on some social media educational posts called the Saturday Sustainability Series, and our next meeting is May eleventh.
All right, any questions for Heidi? And again, the committee also talked about if don't don't be bashful, you can also pick up uh, as you're taking a walk or whatever on Saturday too, it's, it all helps. All right, um, Heidi, up again with Utility Commission.
Yeah, we met briefly on the fourteenth, and uh, at the time of the meeting, well, three maintenance was nearly done. Um, unfortunately, the utility position that we posted didn't generate many candidates, so reviewing that. Uh, spring hydrant flushing is starting, said um, mid-April, so that's uh, starting soon or maybe has already. Uh, our next meeting is May twelfth. I don't know, JJ, you have anything to add on?
Nope, that's perfect. We almost set a a meeting record, and we're at thirteen minutes.
All right, any questions for Heidi or JJ? All right, then we'll move on to Plant Commission. Did I get this right? Uh, we have a number of items here to discuss and consider, and what I'll do, and I almost see a a few of the folks that uh, are representing these developments that are on, so I'm gonna start off with the first discussing consider, which is a general development plan for Continental properties for their uh, two hundred and eighty eight unit multifamily residential development located in the southeast corner of North Main and East Cottage Grove behind the Wisconsin Bank and Trust. Um, so I see that Eric Thomas on. Eric, I don't know if you want to share a few things with the board, and you kind of, you have this down pat now after the plant commission and the neighborhood meeting and the board and the plant commission meeting, so.
Yeah, maybe I can um, just share maybe a couple differences from uh, the last couple, just to bring it up to speed. Um, so I'm gonna share my screen. I'll I'll kind of go through pretty quickly this continent, you know, talked about continental already and a couple of the just general things, and just focus maybe more on the site plan, and if if we need to, I can definitely go back and explain that a little bit more. So let me um, just share my screen here. Okay, does everybody see the screen?
Yes.
Well, um, I'm Eric Tom, I'm uh, Senior Development Director with Continental. Uh, Max Sychek is a land planner, is also on the line, as well as uh, Ryan Wagner, who's an engineer, uh, was V three. Now, just like I said, breeze by Continental a little bit, and I think you all know a little bit about the site from talking about things last time. The concept site, just so everybody kind of recalls, is that we had uh, uh, an access over here on East Oak Street, another access off of Main Street. Uh, we changed this concept um, around a little bit. Um, and changed our let's look back, our clubhouse originally over here on Main. We flipped it over here to East Cottage for a couple reasons. One, we wanted to get the the um, clubhouse more centrally located on the site. But secondarily, we heard a lot of um, feedback uh, both from the meetings and from the neighbor, neighborhood meeting about really trying to get traffic away from Main Street, maybe push it more toward Cottage Grove Road. And we think that this change uh, will help do that. I know there's a there's a school issue with uh, folks picking people up, which we shouldn't contribute to because we're coming right down here from the school, but we thought that this was a a good change to make. Um, it did change a little bit, the uh, configuration we had along Cottage Grove Road, and it, we did change the elevations in a couple spots, which I'll point out here in a second. We are taking a look, and uh, we're gonna get some concept plans um, over to staff. Maybe as soon as tomorrow, we're getting pretty close here with uh, kind of those dog park features that we talked about at the concept hearing. We're we're going through a lot of grading plan uh, details as we're getting into the PIP uh, materials, so that we'll we'll have a little bit more of this, we'll be coming up with the PIP um, to talk about then. Um, still going to be two hundred and eighty eight direct first floor units, or direct first floors and uh, some second floor common stairway units, but um, you know, we're on a path, in the park plan is going to be about eleven acres. And we're um, really have the thirty two, one twelve, one twelve, thirty two number of units, the typical home size between five hundred and forty and thirteen fifty, and then the average projected rent based on those bedroom sizes being on nine hundred and thirty nine to uh, sixteen twenty for a three bedroom. So again, we're we're conventionally financed uh, with private equity and uh, bank equity. Um, we have, uh, we're pet friendly, and I want to talk a little bit more tonight about the Continental uh, management team. You know, we really uh, take a lot of pride in our uh, homegrown management team. I mean, they're they're in all of our projects. We do, we have twenty four hour maintenance, we do full-time leasing agents. Uh, homegrown management team, I mean, they're, they're in all of our projects. We do, we have twenty-four hour maintenance, we do full-time leasing agents. We have a thirty-day pledge, uh, which is really part of our five-star uh program. We do full credit check, background check, and referral check. We also check income and, you know, monthly income depending on the type of. Um. Bedroom uh size you have, we, we, you need to have three times rent um for monthly income to make sure you qualify for that. And we also have a lot of great outreach um initiatives we have at each one of our locations, uh, kind of guided by the on, on uh site staff. A little bit more about our pledge, and really, we really want to make sure that the experience, everyone comes to our communities. Uh, at, really have an excellent experience. Uh, we want to hear the feedback, but the, the big thing is we back that up with a thirty day, thirty-day pledge to. If we don't meet the expectations, we'll release you for the, from the lease. So that is uh something we take a lot of pride in. It kind of really shows our. Um, our respect and, and really this at-home community that we want to have um at each one of our, our properties. Just a little bit more about site amenities. Um, we do have a pet playground that's gonna be separate from the, from the dog parks we are talking about with the park. But uh clubhouse has a uh community workout center. Um, it's got a nice little room we, we have for people that are uh part of the community to have events and some small events, nothing really big. And then we have a, um, a pet care car wash area that'll be located by our, our um old pet playground over there uh on the site plan. Um, the clubhouse is really still the same as we showed before, uh, with a nice little contemporary features that we've got. Again, uh, this dual outdoor here in the back actually rolls up, this is the part of that fitness center that would go out of the patio to the uh deck, which. We're getting, uh, we almost were close enough for summer uh two weeks ago, but maybe it'll, it'll come back in the next week or so. Um, so these were the elevations they showed previously. No, there's no real rear uh. Rear elevation, it, it really had two fronts um on both sides, but. The change that we did, and this is the other type elevation that we have too, the change we did along Cottage Grove Road. Is that in the facing away from Cottage Grove won't have this tando stone material, but we wanted to decorate that. The base uh first floor with more tando stone look at the pop-out, so when the buildings pop out here and here. We wanted to have that stone feature kind of hitting um at these areas, the kind of accent, it's kind of what. Um, was asked for, I think, at that concept level. We worked with staff a little bit to kind of come around and. And uh make some changes to the elevations along Cottage Grove Road um to achieve, I think, what um, uh, what was asked for there. So again, this is some three D renderings as well, and um, you know, we do have some covered garages, uh, that'll be separate rent. Uh, this is that um, uh, maintenance shed and kind of, this is only, this is not for fixing cars, this is a car wash and there's a little wash over here for the pets. Um, uh, when it does get warm. Um, just a couple isometrics again of the units, the studio unit, uh, one of the types of studio units we have. Um, the one-bedroom and, and these bedrooms can fit, um, you know, a king-size bed in it, uh, without any trouble. Actually. Even the, the studios could fit at least a queen-size bed here behind this area. Um, and then a two-bedroom look, um, where you're coming in. And then uh the three-bedroom look with uh some more windows here on the side. Um, a little bit of our demographics, um. We, we're about eight percent of our population uh would be uh school-age children, so about forty-two roughly. And we figured, based on our demographics, it kind of breaks down, um, seven children in the neighborhood would be under four. Seventeen uh would be between five and ten, so elementary, middle school will be nine, and then the high school age would be nine. But we have a lot more residents in our portfolio that have pets, thirty to forty percent of our um residents have pets, and that's because. A large majority of our um residents are either empty nesters. Or um, they're usually uh either single or couples or millennials that really haven't built um a family yet. So it's a slower proportion of families in, in our communities typically. Uh, also wanted to show, and I think I showed this too at uh the concept, a little bit of our spending power. Uh, the average month we rent, and you look at all the different rents I just showed before, it's about fifteen hundred. Um, you know, capacity's two hundred and eighty-eight for homes, but you know, we're probably looking at uh total houses of about two hundred and seventy-four. When it's all said and done, but that combined purchase power um with our residents is about sixteen million. Uh, alone, when you look at just our aesthetics when we build it, it's probably gonna cost us about thirty-five to forty million dollars. Um, to build this authentic community, so just to give you kind of a sense of scale on that. Um, and with lumber prices going up. Who knows what it could be by the time we put a shovel on the ground. Uh, so with that, short presentation, just um available for any questions that you might have um at this time.
Any questions for Eric?
Um, this is Sarah. Oh, go ahead, Heidi.
Uh, so I think one of the big benefits of infill development is you can really um utilize infrastructure that's in place already. You're not building new roads or new sewer lines or water lines, like it's all here already at this intersection. So I think that's great, but another piece of infrastructure we already have in place is the bike path on Main Street, which is awesome. It, you know, we can promote uh alternate transportation and there's a lot of accessibility um for our local businesses that these. Residents will be able to use. So I was wondering if you include a bike fix-it station in the car care area, or if you might consider. Adding a bike fix-it station.
Um, we haven't done that in the past, we could definitely take a look at that. Um, uh, we can take a look at that as part of our amenities package. And I think to your point too, it, maybe just to point this out, uh, we are extending on Cottage Grove, that pedestrian path. Um, that goes up and beyond, um, all the way up here to the edge of the property line. We would be connecting to that bike path then. Um, right over here, so. Yeah, we, we can take a look and see what we can do. I don't know if we've done that in a different community, but I'll, I'll definitely check into it.
Yeah, that'd be great, thank you.
Mm-hmm.
Sarah?
Yes, um, uh, two questions for you. One, I read in the prep materials, I think it's a plant commission, there was some comment about. Concern for the fire trucks maybe not fitting or making some of those turns, I'm curious if you've addressed or, or. What your thoughts are on that. And then, second, where, where do you have the pet playground space? I don't see it on the map. And, and do you have any other thoughts on the dog park that you were talking about?
Yeah, um, maybe one, let me take the fire truck one first. We did, we did uh. Um, provide a truck turnaround um internally, um, but we can definitely um provide that if it wasn't in your packet, but. Uh, we did use the um stacks we got um from Kevin Lord um to kind of run a, a truck turn, so we feel pretty good about, about that. Uh, right now, our pet playground that we're looking to do um is located here in the corner. Um, the pet playground for the community in the, in the park, we're looking for the parking up here and the pet playgrounds. Uh, there'd be a series of, of um, probably about a one-acre pet playground back in here on this side of the pond, and then like a two-acre one. That would fit over here. I know there was some discussion at plant commission too about trying to connect. Uh, back over here at uh Main Street. We took a look at that again with our civil engineer. And that, we've got, if you've, if you walked out, if you remember, kind of coming down from the slope here um by the school. It's a really significant grade back here, and there, we're barely squeezing this in, we've got some retaining walls, we're actually gonna have to put around eleven. And probably even um near nine. Um, so that would be difficult to do. Um, but we're, we're looking at other alternatives here to, um, you know, maybe there's a possibility we could talk to the Parks Department about. Connecting something to the school back here, because I know there's a, oh, big um, um, soccer fields and stuff behind here, so. I think there's a lot of opportunities here that we can discuss with them and, and bring to you at, at the specific plan portion.
Thanks, and I did find the fire truck one, I'm sorry, I missed that in the slew of paperwork here, thank you.
No problem, there's a lot there.
Any other questions for Eric or certainly we can hear from staff as well. This was approved at the plant commission, by the way.
I do have one other question.
Sure.
Uh, thanks. So the landscape surface area ratio is um being uh modified. Um, there is a lot of impervious surface there um between the buildings and the parking lots and. It creates a lot of runoff and there's just a lot of parking lot that needs shade. So I was wondering if we could up the landscaping, specifically trees, to help with shading of parking lots and buildings? I think that was talked about briefly at plant commission also.
Yeah, yeah, one, one of the things we're definitely trying to do is reduce overall parking, and we're working with staff on that. To get to a point where I think it's instead of two, we're trying to get to one seven five, which cuts down on the amount of asphalt you just talked about. Um, you know, we were with our um landscape specific plan, um, we'll look at. Uh, the advantageous spots of laying out um some trees that would get some growth and some height um as much as we can. Um, but that's kind of the, the main things that we're trying to, how we're trying to capture that reduced um asphalt uh footprint that we've got.
Great, thank you.
Uh, to tag along with Heidi if I can, uh, in the eleven, yeah, eleven point zero one acres, I see. Quite a few trees in there as well, um, which is awesome. Uh, do you plan to plant a bunch of trees in that park area? Uh, because right now it's pretty desolate.
Yeah.
There isn't a whole lot of foliage in that uh, in that area.
Yeah, I think there's probably like a bluff right in here or something, there's like a tree line right in here. I think we've got to take a look at, at that with staff and, and grading. You know, we're, we're trying to make sure that because there's a lot of steep grade back here, we want to be able to make it um as usable as possible. Um, there may be an opportunity to put some trees back here, but um, we gotta be careful because our. I guess our history with our pet playgrounds, even for us, and we'll show a, a couple here, but. Um, you really gotta be careful because the dogs like to do their business near the trees, especially when they're young. So we might be able to do more around the perimeter than we want to do in the middle, uh, but we'll look for those opportunities, this is a good point.
Thank you.
Eric, I want to have one other question. Can you speak it out to the traffic study, I think, that came up in the plan commission? It sounds like you thought you'd have results from that pretty, pretty quick. Any thoughts on that?
Yeah, we're definitely looking at that. Um, trying to get a rough draft here, I think, um. Uh, I might even have it as soon as tomorrow, but um, you know, it, not a lot of more detail at this point, and we'll have it when we submit our. Specific plan. Uh, I know there's a lot of concern from our neighborhood meeting about traffic in the area. Um, you know, we're, we're definitely analyzing our community versus the existing traffic patterns that are there. Um, you know, I think there's, there's one thing that we have, you know, thought about is that Oak Street cut through. Um, you know, maybe we can put some signage in there, there might be an opportunity to do something there. Uh, there's not a lot we can do about this cut through that's happening that we were made aware of in the neighborhood. Um, because that kind of goes way down past our, our site. Um, so there's, there's things like that we're looking at as well. If that helps. It's kind of different from what we had at plant commission, but that's kind of what we're looking at right now.
Any other questions for Eric? Aaron, any uh general comments that you want to throw in? Or I, I don't know if I see Kevin, if he's on.
Yeah, this was approved with a series of conditions, both from my staff report and Kevin's, um, I can run through those pretty quickly here. Um, the first one is kind of our standard note that signage requires its own approval. Um, and just making sure to, that they'll comply with the signage setbacks and vision triangles and things at the driveways. Um, the second one is just kind of our standard notation of the reasons, this is a P U D as opposed to just being in a base zoning district, that there are some. Uh. Differences from that base, um, most similar district. Uh, the third one, uh, there's kind of a conceptual landscaping plan provided that. So I indicated they're on the right track, but we'll need the final uh version of that with the precise implementation plan, so you can. Add up all the points, look at buffering and, and things like that, and some of the. Details Heidi mentioned with um, you know, locating shade trees and things like that. Um, likewise, we'll need the photometric study and exterior lighting details. Um, we want to see more details on how the trash enclosure is being constructed. Uh, just a note that they'll be required to pay their park fees and uh they're continuing to work with the Parks Department on the. Uh, design and use of the parkland. Um. Number seven, we'll just have a fresh updated copy of the G D P when all the conditions are accounted for. Um, and lastly, just that approval of the G D P is subject to review of the traffic study um by M S A's traffic engineers. And then Kevin had some as well.
Thanks, Aaron. Um, I, I can make mine um pretty brief and summarize them, I guess, pretty quick. A lot of these are more. Uh, just general things that we'll be looking for, I guess, moving forward is to, um, there's a monument sign that's gonna require a separate permit. Um, for village ordinances, um, with revised grading that they had shown and Eric had mentioned regarding um some retaining walls. Um, just making sure that those are gonna, there's some of those that are looking to be quite high, so they're gonna have to be structurally. Um, looked at and have some tiebacks and making sure all that is all within village property. Um. When that's uh, when those are completed and everything. Um, the other two comments that we had, um, well, I guess, there's three. One generally is just the traffic, um, basically just looking at their report when that comes and, um, you know, go through that with them. Um, but basically just analyzing the report. Um, we did have a couple utility comments that. Uh, are just more in regards to the, the specific plan as well, as far as looping the water main when they do it, uh, go through here. Uh, the water and sewer were planned to be public, so there'll be some easements and, and everything so that uh the village can access and maintain those. As those are designs, we'll be looking at that. And then our last comments are kind of a, a large group of them, but. In general, it's just, we will have to review all the stormwater, um, that they'll be, you know, they were out there doing some soil sampling, so infiltration will be looked at. Um, and like I said, they, we've kind of seen like a pipe, a very generic pipe routing that they were just, just starting um previously. Um, so we kind of know kind of what they're thinking, but um obviously all the calculations will have to be supplied and everything like that, so we'll be reviewing. Um, basically a lot of that for the stormwater ordinances. But that's basically it.
All right, thanks, Aaron, thanks, Kevin. Um, any questions or comments from trustees?
I, I, I do have another question. Uh, you've got the retention pond, which is up over the hill, as I recall. Uh, is the plan to pump water from the parking lot up there? How is the water gonna get to the retention pond?
It's gonna drain back there. I mean, there, eh, there's a couple of spots here in the front, or might have to have a little bit of detention. Um, uh, but you know, the ma- that majority of it's going back here. Um, it's getting piped back here in a couple different spots that we're kind of conceptually looking at. Uh, but we'll have more details about it. Um. When we get the precise one.
Sorry to answer your question a little bit as well. I think, I mean, this is just looking at, very generically looking at their plan originally. But it is low back in that corner, so the piping that they have, I assume is just gonna be a pretty deep cut to get the pipe through that hill, basically. Um, and back there, um, you know, assuming when they're looking through their stormwater, everything meets codes and all that kind of stuff, but that would be my, my assumption of it anyway.
Well, I appreciate that. I just wanted to make sure that we were able to get the water from the parking lots uh back to the retention pond rather than through the uh. Normal stormwater sewer, whatever you want to call it. Um, and, and that, you know, looking at just the topography that. That's a pretty deep cut to get it back there, and I just want to make sure that was included in the, in the plan here to uh, to do that, so, thank you.
All right, any other questions or comments, or in this case, this is a discussing consider?
Uh, I would, I I believe that this development meets the objectives in our housing and certainly I I think it'll serve as a catalyst in really a core area of the village. So uh I'll make a motion to approve the proposed general development plan for um Continental properties for our two hundred and eighty-eight unit multifamily residential development located on the parcels listed on our agenda at the southeast corner of North Main Street and East Cottrell Road.
I'll second.
Oh, with staff conditions?
Sounds good.
All right. All right. Thank you. Um, I think that was Sarah either or Paul, I don't know, but I'll let uh Lisa determine the tie there. So uh it's a motion second to approve a general uh development plan for Continental. Um, any further discussion? Having heard none, all those in favor?
Hi.
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 Anybody opposed? Anybody abstaining? Motion carries. Thanks. Thanks, Eric. All right. Um, second item then from Plan Commission that is a discuss and consider is a request for a site plan approval uh from Grand Appliances for a forty thousand square foot warehouse facility on Lot fourteen in the Commerce Park. This is on the southwest corner of Limestone Pass and Landmark Drive. Uh, the Plan Commission also approved this with the staff conditions. And I see uh Jesse, you're on. Colin, you're on. Um.
Keith is on.
Yep, Keith's on. Thank you.
Hey.
Um, you guys can take it away.
All right, sounds good. So as John mentioned, uh I'm Keith Verstegen. I'm with Keller. I'm the project manager for the project. Uh, also with us, we have Jesse Moffett representing Grand Appliances. Uh, Jesse, I don't know if anybody else has joined you today. Uh, don't see anybody. I don't hear you either, but um and then we have Colin Mizel, who's uh in charge of the civil site design. So um what I'll do, just to give everybody an overview, I will share my screen here. Um, and I'll walk you through a pretty quick, high-level overview of the project, uh because I I believe some of you maybe haven't seen it yet, so. Um, starting with, uh, I'll just walk you through the floor plan real quick. There's uh, everybody see this okay?
Yes.
Okay, great. Uh, so basically we have an open warehouse uh uh with the docks facing to the north and a truck, a dock pad here. And then there's a small office and some little bit of utility space over here on the left side or the uh the west side. Uh, so that's the basic interior plan layout. Um, here are the elevation drawings. So from the north, uh there's the loading docks, one at-grade door, and then this is where the office area would be here. Um, east elevation, uh there's a drainage ditch here, and I'll let Colin talk a little bit more about that. Um, from the south and from the west, you know, this, if you're familiar with the property, the property falls roughly twenty feet from um southwest to northeast. So the way you see the elevation plans here is that the finished floor is going to be down at this level here, and the grade will come up along the side of the building. Uh, so on on both, uh basically at the high point being in the southwest corner. Okay. Uh, this facility is being used for regional distribution for Grand Appliances. And I'll let uh maybe Jesse talk a little bit more about that when we get to that. Um, but right now I'll share some renderings with you that we put together. So this is from the, would be from the north or from the southwest corner uh view. This would be from the northwest corner view. And then uh we wanted to show this one looking straight in, uh because this is a corner lot, we have, we do have street-facing docks here. Um, so that's kind of an overall picture of uh the renderings that we've got for you there. Okay there? Um, next, I think we'll touch on the site plan. I don't know, Colin, if you want to speak to that a little bit. I've got the grading plan up. Go ahead.
Yeah, so as Keith mentioned, there is a lot of grade on the site. It's a little bit of a challenge to fit a building in on a property like this. Um, so we're a little bit utilizing the building walls itself almost as retaining walls along the south west, south and west uh walls. The east side of the building will grade away at uh three or four to one slopes down to a drainage ditch um along the existing drainage easement. So um the waysite drainage is working on the site. If you look on the south end, there's an existing large berm that's providing some of the screening for the site in that vacant corridor. Um, we pick up that offset water that's draining at us in a small swell. We bring it around to the east side of the property and then drain it north in that existing drainage easement. That drainage easement right now isn't very, there isn't a defined uh ditch, I guess I'd say, through there. So as part of this project, we're putting in a ditch um and a little bit of a berm there to keep the water on our side of the property. Also, keeping in mind and trying to keep it deep enough so that the property to the east, if it might develop, so there's a little bit of depth there for them to drain to as well. Also, keeping in mind that that site really wants to drain to the northeast, but making sure it's deep enough for some some drainage drainage there as well. Along the west and north property lines, we are installing sidewalk to connect this sidewalk on on landmark there and over to the east. There's also a berm there that's uh one to two feet high that will provide some screening to the site. You'll also notice some tight contours there west of the parking lot. Um, that's proposed to be a uh riptop slope to help um come down to the elevation there in the northwest corner of the site. Um, Keith, if you jump over to the landscaping plan. Oh, um, yeah, so what we'll see here is a proposed landscaping plan. Um, there's two different greens on there. The lighter green is more of a turf or shorter grass. You can see we put that immediately adjacent to the sidewalks on the edge of the property line and the ditches. The dark green represents what we're proposing as a native prairie grass, so that'll be a taller, three to four foot tall native grass with some wildflowers. And those large uh pink purple trees you see there are oak. Um, the intent for this landscaping plan is really kind of mimic the oak savanna type landscaping that was in the Dane County area prior to development, so trying to make it a little more natural and representative of what was here prior to. Um, in addition, that native prairie grass will provide excellent screening for the development from the roadway. On the east side of the property by the loading docks, we have several evergreens and large um bushes there planted to help screen the loading dock um from the road to the north and to the east. Um, I think if we just jump back to the site plan, we can touch on the parking quick, Keith. Um, nothing too um extravagant there. Um, just, you know, some parking stalls um uh adjacent to the to the building there. Those have been shifted up in a more recent um update, just to try and provide a little more separation from the building based on comments from Planning Commission and the Art Committee.
Colin, I had that one. You want me to pull it up here quick?
Um, yeah, that's sure.
There we go. How's that?
Yes. Yep. So you can see we just are providing a little more spacing, uh adjusting that up so there's more of a a path there adjacent to the link. Right in there. Yep. Okay, so that's that's a site, I guess, as a high-level overview. Um, Keith, I don't know if you were gonna continue or hand it over to Jesse to talk about operations?
Um, yeah, we can, I mean, I guess maybe we'll leave the rest for questions.
Sure.
Jesse, if you're, if you wanted to speak just a little bit about the operation here, you.
Can you, can you guys hear me okay?
Yep, yep.
Perfect. So uh Grand's been in business since nineteen thirty. Uh, we've operated in the state of Wisconsin for a couple decades now. Our current facility is in DeForest, and uh we are growing and ran out of space. And this uh this facility gives us an opportunity to expand and uh be close to our customer base. We have two stores in uh the Dane County area, one in Sun Prairie, one in Fitchburg. Uh, our main distribution center and headquarters is in Stewart, Wisconsin, which is in Racine, uh which also makes us a little closer to that for transfers. Uh, this building will have uh seven to nine full-time warehouse employees that basically are are storing product and prepping it for residential deliveries. And then we'll have uh three semis a day coming in with transfer products we're receiving from manufacturers. And then our residential delivery service will go out in the morning from six to eight A M and then come back uh from two to four P M. So the activity in this building is really early morning, a little bit in the afternoon, and then a little bit of truck receiving throughout the day. Uh, our our shifts there will be from roughly six A M closing up no later than seven P M. So that's kind of a real high-level overview of the operation. We're we're super excited to get uh into this community because we have a large customer base here and just the access to the major highways is 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 great for us. So we're we're super excited about the the opportunity.
So that's the overview, John. I don't know if we want to open it up for questions or anything else you want us to cover?
Um, we'll probably kick it over to staff real quick because they may address some of the questions that that the board has. Um, so turn it over to Aaron and uh see what he has to say.
John, um so this was approved by the Plan Commission and A R C um with some conditions. Uh, the first one, the standard signed permit as a separate process condition. Uh, the second one, uh the Plan Commission and A R C were okay with granting a waiver for the side setback um on the street side. Um, pushing the building further east creates all kinds of issues with the topography on that side of the site, so. Um, given that and given the use of the prairie grass to kind of give more of a visual buffer on that street side, we were okay with that favor. Um, number three, they already addressed, there were some concerns about um getting around the entrances and some of the parking stalls there, but they've shifted those stalls and uh corrected that. Um, fourth one, as part of the covenants, uh any rooftop units have to be screened. At this point, they're planning everything to be on the ground, but um sometimes that does change through the uh construction process. So if anything does go on the roof, just a reminder, it does have to be screened. Um, and then on the south side, there would typically be a landscape buffer required um between two different uses, so industrial and potentially residential to the south, but because there's that sixty-six foot gap that we don't really know how or if that will get developed, it seems kind of premature to do the buffer if we don't know what we're buffering to. Um, so we'll have something put in the developer agreement that if for when that does develop, um they would have twelve months to put in an adequate buffer for the ordinance. And I believe Kevin had some conditions as well.
Thanks, Aaron. Um, yeah, the, I think uh Colin took care of a few of the ones I had as well. Um, one of mine was regarding just verifying some of the door entrances. There was a a floor plan and the site plan just had, it looked like appeared doors on different sides. So just verifying that um as to, I think the floor plan might have had a a door on the east and the south side and the site plan that's up now, it looks like it's got one on the west side. So um something that we can work with, work with on that, but just verifying that. Um, as Colin mentioned, the grading is going to be done on the east side in a um drainage swale uh as an easement that's through there, but basically just notifying the property owner to the east as well that the that the grading and work will be done there um as well. Um, there was a handhole. It looks like this is up on the northwest corner of the site, so just making sure that's out of the sidewalk when it's um all said and done. Um, the safety around the building, that was, I think Colin already addressed that. It looked like that was basically had to do with uh the moving of the of the parking and everything as far as the proximity of the building. Um, I think our other comments were all regarding basically stormwater, um which basically is just mainly up at the entrance there, and it looks like there might be a change on this one as well already um compared to the other one, but possibly uh adding some curb and gutter up in that area to basically collect some stormwater to get it over to the uh over to the swale instead of making sure it doesn't go out the street and then verifying some of the uh basically that the hundred-year rainfall events um will get out into that swale and through the flume that they've got proposed. Um, and then I think one of our last ones was basically just, I think Colin was talking about it as well, but basically making sure that if the the swale on the east side basically meets the hundred-year rainfall events, and if it does overflow, it overflows into the street before it overflows into the property to the east, basically. So providing some of that information, but everything that we thought we could uh work with them on pretty easily.
All right. Thanks, Kevin. Thanks, Aaron. Any questions from board members?
Jesse, maybe you mentioned it and maybe, Aaron, you touched on it, but I remember at the A R C meeting, there was some discussion around um traffic and the frequency of tractor trailers loading and unloading. I know, not even necessarily a concern, but you know, I think it was a, just a question, and so maybe you can touch on that again.
Sure. Um, so again, we receive uh semis during the day, and that number is no more than five in a given day. Uh, the majority of our traffic is our straight trucks, a twenty-six-foot truck that is residential deliveries, and that's twice a day. So that's that that morning spot I talked about, six to eight, and that afternoon spot I talked about, say, two to four. But the the semi semi-traffic, three to five trucks a day, anywhere from the ten A M to two P M because we try not to uh have our straight trucks in the docks at the same time as the big trucks.
Thank you.
Did that help?
It did. Thank.
Okay.
All right. Um, other questions for Jesse?
Just trying to get it all the elevation straight and such, but the houses that are on Michelle Lane to the south and their backyards, they're gonna be looking at the side of the building that's on the bottom of the screen there. Is that right?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay, and that's where you're gonna have the grasses and the oak tree and the native plantings. Is that kind of?
You can go back to that.
Okay.
I'll pop back to that. So, yeah, there's that sixty-six foot um piece of property here that runs east to west. And then down in here is that residential area, and that's where that berm is, that the large berm that's existing there. Is that what you're asking?
Yep. Thanks for just going over that again briefly. Thank you.
And that existing, that existing berm is anywhere between, I think, three to four feet higher than the ground elevation of the building. So I'm just giving you an idea of of the height as it's from, kind of, everything's kind of draining down to the east, but but they kind of go down at the same slope.
Thank you. That's useful, extra info. I appreciate it.
Any other questions from, comments from board members?
Um, I have one.
To, oh, whoops.
Wait, sorry. Uh, I was just wondering, does this property require a neighborhood meeting at all? Or was that done?
This does not because it's just a site plan. There's no rezoning or conditional use permit or planned unit development.
Ah, okay. Thank you.
Yeah.
All right, Troy, you.
Yeah, I'll, I'll make a motion. Yeah, I'll make a motion to approve the site plan for Grand Appliances for a forty thousand square foot warehouse facility on Lot fourteen in the Commerce Park uh with um conditions by both the staff and engineering.
I'll second.
All right, we got a motion from Troy, a second from Paul. Uh, any further discussion? Having heard none, all those in favor?
Hi.
All right.
Anybody opposed? Anybody abstaining? Motion carries. Uh, thanks.
Thank you very much.
Yes, uh, we're looking forward to uh Grand Appliances coming to to the Commerce Park, so.
Us too. Thank you for all your time.
Yep, thank you. All right. Um, it was a busy night in plan. So we'll move on then to um discuss and consider a request for approval for a site plan amendment for Gray Wolf Partners reconstruction and expansion of the outdoor patio area at one six zero seven and one six zero nine Landmark Drive. And I see Kevin is on, so you want to take it away, Kevin?
Yeah, so let me share the screen here.
All right, you guys see the screen now?
We can.
Okay. So uh Gray Wolf Partners is ownership in both the LLCs, the sixteen-oh-seven and sixteen-oh-nine. And we're trying to put a patio plan there that'll, we can share the patio with BB Jacks and also the Comfort Suite Hotels that's under construction right now. The um plan, so the grayed-out area and this whole area is gonna be all the new construction. This area to the north, this is BB Jacks, and then this south edge lawn here is the Comfort Suites Hotel. So we wanna put fencing around here to contain this area from the outside and then put in gates just that are emergency exit only basically in four locations out there. So anybody that's coming into the patio has to enter from either inside of BB Jacks or from the center of the actual hotel, not entering from the parking lot. So on the patio itself, obviously, we got a lot of seating going on here, adding in a lot more than they have now. And we got fire tables, nine fire tables going in. They wanna add a seventeen-by-twenty-eight pergola in this area over here to the west. Um they're wanting to add a stage in here, just a small stage, so they can have a like two-person bands, nothing big coming in there. And to basically the perimeter to this is all gonna be landscaped, both the east and the west side. And then we'll have movable planting boxes contained with inside of the area at different locations. The uh other part of the plan too is this existing walk-in cooler that's on the west side of BB Jacks. Uh that big silver box there, we got plans to get that all uh wrapped up on three sides of it, the north, south, and west side, with some rough cedar uh fencing to take care of that. Um we're working on an agreement, a shared patio agreement between BB Jacks and the hotel and also getting a permanent easement for that area in between them. And we're also working with uh Choice Brands, which is uh in control of Comfort Suite Hotels uh because they also have to approve this plan. So we can't just go ahead and, you know, state it on our own. The the branding also has to be approved with the Choice Hotels. I'm not sure if you have any specific questions about what we got going on here?
Um just a comment real quick, uh the Plan Commission approved this as well. Um any questions for Kevin or initially, or we can move right to uh to Aaron to provide his feedback? Let's let's just move to Aaron real quick and then and then if board members have questions, I'll be consistent.
Sure. Um you may recall when we did the hotel planned unit development, there was kind of a placeholder for something like this, but obviously they're coming back now to provide a lot more detail. Um and I don't really have a lot to add. I think it's, you know, a great project that makes no good use of what would otherwise be a loft over space and um and we've had some comments, I know, from some people in the public that the two buildings seem too close together. But I think having this ties them together in a very logical um way. Then uh Kevin mentioned the one condition we had was just recording a permanent easement. Um it's not as important now that it's basically different LLCs, but that are basically the same entry own, same entity owning in both halves. But that may not always be the case. So just having something in place defining the the maintenance and the obligations and things like that would be.
All right, um questions or comments from the board?
Yeah, I'm just curious. We're not taking away any parking spaces by doing this. Is that correct?
There is six parking spaces that were taken away um and had to reconfigure a little bit. We have four spots along this area. The original curb line is through here. And we have to move these ones out of here. And then also there's two spots on this side that we have to take out to expand that. We have uh concrete fingers out here in the parking lot that we have it on our five-year plan probably next year to replace the parking lot for the sixteen-oh-nine property. And those concrete fingers, I don't think really serve any purpose. There's no dirt. There's no plantings on them. Uh we can move three of those to actually recover. And then the hotel parking lot um is actually overbuilt for what we needed. So it's a little bit oversized on parking for the hotel, which can be utilized because this is a shared patio with the hotel and BB Jacks.
And 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 what kind of separation do we have between cars and the patio to avoid any sort of catastrophe with?
Sure, we got six, yeah, we got six-foot aluminum fences going on on the west side, four-foot aluminum fences going on on the east side, plus the vegetation that we're gonna be growing in between here. Um on the west side here, that backside, uh once we open it up that you can pass all the way through here, which you can't because of construction right now, we uh there is a dumpster surround in this area here. We would already talking with the guys about putting a speed bump in this area and another one here just north of this patio so that we don't have anybody trying to come through with excess speed in that area for any foot traffic coming off of this. Um this other east side, we're just trying to handle it, the fencing and the curving. So there is continuous curving along here too, sorry, on both sides.
Okay. All right. Uh are are we within ordinance as far as uh parking spaces, Aaron?
As Kevin mentioned, we were a few over with the hotels, so it balances out, especially when they add a few back during the repaving.
Okay, all right. And then what about rainwater runoff? We're adding a thorough amount of square footage here of concrete which can't seep into the soil, which and some of this is dirt and some of it's already paved. Are we okay with the runoff part of this?
Well, we're taking all of this and we're tying in uh drains through this whole area down the center. And we're gonna pitch everything a little bit to the center so it'll drain off. This gets tied into the hotel's uh stormwater system, which is a retainment system on the uh southeast corner of our lot, between there and Quick Trip, that uh collects the rainwater and helps it absorb in the ground naturally. And uh but if it is a large amount of rain, it will be an overflow and it is connected to the city storm. But with the size of uh retention area they built underground, we don't foresee that happening a lot.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Any other questions?
A motion to approve the site plan amendment from Gray Wolf Partners for reconstruction and expansion of an outdoor patio area at sixteen-oh-seven and sixteen-oh-nine Landmark Drive.
I'll second that.
And uh with conditions, both Jeff and Paul?
Yes.
Staff conditions?
Yes.
All right. Um all right. Any further discussion?
When are you breaking ground? Or when do you plan? Is this part of the, you gonna start?
That area is pretty well up right back there and it's inside, a lot of it's inside of our contained area for the hotel project because we're still doing underground work back there right now.
Okay.
Um we have to take care of uh the exterior finishes on the building. We're gonna start on the north side of the hotel. And then once we get that in there, then we can go in and do our flat work and everything back there. So I'm hoping we can get in there at the end of June and start this flat work. The hotel is scheduled to open September one right now at this point. So I'd like to see the patio mid-August or a little earlier than that opening.
Great, thanks.
All right, any other discussion? Having heard none, all those in favor then?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Any abstain? Motion carries. Thanks, Kevin.
All right, thanks, everybody.
All right, um just a couple other items then recovered and planned uh related to uh ordinance regarding park fees because park fees are uh they're tied up into the zoning, the and we needed a public um uh forum, a public uh, a public meeting uh discussed. It was that plan. So uh Aaron did a nice job of walking through uh those. There's been a lot of work on that by both staff and and parks um as well. So Aaron, I don't know if you wanna do a a quick summary for the board?
Yeah, so this is intended to um address a couple of issues. First of all, you'll recall, um we went through this with Cottage Grove Commons phase two that um technically the way the ordinance is written now, when there's a planned unit development, the park fees are one of the things that can be negotiable. Um we talked about that with the parks committees. They were kind of not in favor of having that negotiability. Um so we're taking that out. Um to kind of compensate for that, we're adjusting some of the rates for multifamily by assigning them on a kind of per-bedroom basis as opposed to just a flat rate for any unit of any type. Um there are comparable communities that do that. Verona specifically does the per-bedroom idea. Um some of the other ones have a lower rate for multifamily just based on the idea that they would tend to have. If it's a smaller unit, they have less residents and most people are using the parks. Um there's also an affordability issue, um when it's just a flat fee for any unit type. Um basically, the less expensive the unit is, the higher percentage of your housing cost is going towards parks um compared to a more expensive unit. Um so we did add something where if a project is a an affordable project, sort of similar to moving out where it's kind of locked into being um affordable through the tax credit program, um they would have lower park fees as well.
Uh this was also approved by the Plan Commission. Uh thanks, Aaron. Uh any questions regarding this? This is again uh per the the board's direction, albeit I think a few months ago already. Uh but again, as I said earlier, there's been a lot of work done on this and certainly leveraging uh what others have have done in Dane County. Uh so we're kind of consistent like when uh developers do approach us.
I move to approve the ordinance oh-four twenty-twenty-one regarding park fees.
All right, first from Sarah. Is there a second?
Okay.
Second from Heidi. Any further discussion? Having heard none, all those in favor then?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Any abstain? Motion carries. All right, then there's the actual park fee schedule uh for consideration.
Yeah, so we like to keep that separate just so it's, you know, when we adjust that annually or uh tweak it in comparison with other communities, we're not making a whole ordinance change. It's just something we can uh change in a more simple manner. So that's a separate document.
I move to approve the park, oh, I lost the language, park Cottage Grove Park fee schedule as presented.
Second.
All right, first from Sarah, second from Paul. Any further discussion? Having heard none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Any abstain? Motion carries. That was the extent of plan. It was uh again, a lot of motions and a lot of presentations, but uh all good stuff. Um Melissa, uh did I miss anything or? Okay, getting a, no, okay. Thumbs up, all right. Uh with that, I see that Tina Sebold, who's with Strand, is on. If board members don't mind, I'd like to move up the NAVIG uh monitoring review committee um forward because Tina's got uh some comments about the uh work that's gonna be done at the landfill.
Okay. Do you want me to just go ahead and introduce the project?
Uh yes, that would be great, Tina. I appreciate it.
Okay, we'll do. Um as you know, at the Towne Cottage Grove landfill, the Department of Natural Resources has required some additional gas fence to be installed there. That project was put out for bids and bids were opened on April ninth. Um we received one bid. Um the dollar amount on that bid was forty-four thousand, six hundred and forty-five dollars, and that was right on our estimate of what we thought it was going to be. Um the work is installing seven additional gas vents. The contractor that submitted the bid is landfill drilling and piping. Um we sent a a letter to the town, um just talking about um their bid. And we don't have any previous experience with this contractor in particular, but they did provide qualifications, information. Um so the town has reviewed that and actually I was at the town's meeting before uh coming into your meeting. And the town did um approve awarding the contract to landfill drilling and piping. So what will happen next is we'll send them a notice of award letter, assuming the village is okay with it as well. Next step would be to send the notice of award letter to them with contract documents and then start the process of getting the documents signed and returned. Um so the schedule that this project is on, um the way it's written, it's a unit price contract, the way it is written, it's once the project um is awarded and the contractor gets the notice to proceed, the contractor has sixty days to complete the project because it is very small. So worst-case scenario, um the project should be completed by August seventh and we're already two to three weeks ahead of that schedule just by getting the notice of award done sooner than the contract requires. Um so that's really the the project. I'd be happy to answer any questions anyone might have.
Thanks, Tina. Any question from board members? We've kind of talked about this for a while. Um the NAVIC uh landfill committee has discussed it. Uh we did put money in the budget for this. It's in line with with that as Tina referenced. So I'm just asking if anybody on the board has any more further questions? We do have Tina here. Her ex, is her expert?
Um I just wanted to thank Tina for coming here this evening. I know sometimes going to two meetings in one night is not ideal, but I appreciate you coming here to provide us with information on this.
Uh no problem at all. The the virtual environment actually makes that a little easier than it would be otherwise.
Yeah, and Tina, this is Paul Vanderbelde. I was at the meeting on, I think it was September twenty-ninth, and you had a very thorough presentation. You know, and it made sense to me uh what we were looking at and the importance of these vertical vents. Um the one question I have, and I could be wrong, was there uh initially, were we looking at needing eight vertical vents? And if so, do we know how it came to the determination of having needing seven? It's just one of those things that they got in there, they realized it's, that's all we needed, was seven vertical vents? Or am I completely wrong? Did you mention seven vertical vents or eight vertical vents that that being, I just can't recall?
Sure. We talked about um seven or eight. The the um I guess the best way to describe it is the contract actually has a total linear footage of vent wells and we based that on seven. The DNR approved seven. That's where the actual seven comes from. We did submit a remunial action plan at the end of last year that the DNR had to approve before the project could move forward. So that's where the seven locations comes from. Um and we estimated in the bid tab, we had about a hundred and sixty linear feet. And that is based on seven wells at the same depth of the existing vent wells that are there. The actual number of vent wells installed at the end of this project will certainly depend on the depth that they're actually installed. So for example, I think we used roughly twenty-five feet, twenty-three feet or twenty-five feet based on what was out there now. If we find that we have to go deeper, you know, if we get down thirty, thirty-five feet, we may install fewer wells. Um or we'll have to go through the process of deciding whether um we wanna keep the seven locations and add footage. Um you know, so it'll be, we won't know exactly what's installed until the contractor gets into it because we don't know how deep the waste really is in the landfill and the locations that have been selected for gas fence. So we'll keep everyone informed as the process, you know, as as the project proceeds. And you know, a well at a time, we'll be able to watch the footage and see where we are and and report back to both the town and the village on on how it's going. And, you know, a well at a time, we'll be able to watch the footage and see where we are and, and report back to both the town and the village on, on how it's going. I hope that, does that all make sense?
Yep. Thank you for that level of detail. Uh, I appreciate it, Tina, and I understood the importance of these vertical vents helping support reducing the methane levels of that gas probe. So thank you again.
I have a, I have a question if I can. Um, you mentioned the sixty days from, uh, from the award to having the work completed. Is there any sort of penalty clause in there? That they would reduce the cost if they don't get it completed within sixty days?
There's not a penalty clause. Um, and I do believe there are liquidated damages in the contract. Um, just to give you kind of an idea of that scale of days. I think they're estimating that they can get the work done in about six days. The actual work in the field itself, and then it's mostly paperwork and some little bit of restoration, um, after that. So it's, should be very manageable for the contractor to get it done in that sixty days. So we, we hope we won't have to worry about them going long.
Thank you.
Sure.
All right. Any other questions for Tina? Otherwise, this is, uh, you know, discuss and consider the, the award, uh, from, by the board.
I would add motion to approve, I believe, the one bid that we had and award them the gas vertical vent project.
All right.
Dagon.
Thanks, Paul. Uh, thanks, Troy. Uh, any further discussion? Having heard none, all those in favor then?
Aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Anybody abstain? Motion carries. Again, thank you, Tina, for, for sticking with us.
No problem. Thank you for having me.
Thank you, Tina.
All right. Thank you. Have a good evening.
You too. Uh, Paul, since we're on NAVIG and you already jumped in here, anything else at the meeting?
No, I think, I believe I had covered it at the last meeting, um, the very items that we just discussed. So I think that covers it.
Okay. All right, super. All right, so now we're gonna jump back. Lisa's gonna keep me honest. Um, to Parks, Parks Rec. Uh, Heidi?
Thanks. Uh, we met on the eighteenth and we covered a number of items. Uh, MG Baseball is going to be building, um, through volunteers, a small structure at Fireman's Park for scorekeepers to sit in during games and to store items. Um, also discussed the Red Hawk Park plans. Um, Sean did some outreach with the neighbors in, uh, that area for feedback on some design ideas. The playground is posted for bid. Again, that's, um, that was part of the budget approved for this year, uh, with our park uh, improvement, uh, fund. Uh, the committee is planning a special meeting on the twenty-ninth, so we can award the bid. Um, because it takes four to six weeks for the equipment to arrive and then installed after that. So we want to make sure we can get equipment in as soon as possible. So similar to Public Works, we want to get that bid awarded before our next meeting. Um, we also discussed, uh, the capital improvement plan and made some modifications on that. So, um, it's going to be ready for budget time. Uh, the Miracle League kind of updated us on, um, they're raising money for a large LED display, which, um, you know, it'll have kids' pictures, it'll play music, uh, it'll be a really cool feature at the Miracle League. Um, we also talked about our meeting date. Uh, so one of our committee members has a work conflict on the third Thursdays of the month. So, um, it was okay with all of the committee members and we'll be meeting on the fourth Thursday of the month, uh, at five P M. starting in May, so that, um, all members are able to attend. Um, so we'll have the special meeting for Red Hawk Park on the twenty-ninth, and then our next regular meeting will be on May twenty-seventh.
All right. Any questions for Heidi?
Um, for the Miracle League, um, the, I just wanted to note that they had sixty-seven kids sign up for, to participate, which is amazing, but they need more volunteers. So everybody go to Dane County Miracle League and sign up to be a volunteer. It's for eight, eight, um, eight weeks, eight games in the summer from middle of June to beginning of August. And, uh, thirteen and older can be a volunteer and help the participants. So it's a great opportunity. Um, so I hope everybody signs up.
Thanks, Melissa, for the plug. I did see that. That's a great turnout for, for that. And I think it's, uh, we also need, as was said, we, with that many of kids, now we need some people to, extra people to, to help out. So, um, yeah, it's gonna be an exciting evening, each, each set of games that are going on out there. Um, all right, moving on then to Deer Grove EMS. Sarah or Troy?
Uh, we met last Thursday. Um, I think we really discussed, uh, the items three and four here at the organizational review, uh, which passed by, uh, voted four to one. Um, um, Chats and Block did their annual, um, financial presentation and everything listed from the, uh, money side of things. Um, calls for the year are, uh, up a little bit, two eighty versus two fifty-two. Um, update on the, uh, new ambulance, uh, chassis has been ordered on track for delivery to downlifters by July. Uh, and downlifters is on track to have that, uh, to us, uh, sometime in January of twenty twenty-two. Uh, updated a couple of SOPs. The first was the credit card policy, which really was just, uh, a format change only. And the fund balance policy is going to be discussed at the next meeting, and the next meeting is on, uh, May, uh, twentieth. Um, any questions at all? Anything to add, Sarah, or Chief Line? I see you're on.
Nope.
Nothing here. You did a fine job somewhere, isn't Troy?
Thank you, sir.
All right, um, we move on then to the Anhok Architectural Review Committee. Uh, we met on, uh, the sixteenth, uh, Friday the sixteenth, covered the two items already covered in plan, which were, um, the, uh, grant appliance site and provided some feedback there. Again, approve that. And as well as the, um, uh, request for a site amendment plan for Gray Wolf Partners for their patio area. And, um, uh, approve that as well as a committee for the, for the park. So those are the two things that were going on there. Covered NAVIG, uh, reports from village officers, starting with Rick. I think you're here, uh, and standing, uh, because Larry is off.
I have been waiting all night to tell you I have nothing to report.
Well, at least you're keeping us honest, right? They're listening in. Um, all right, then we move on to COVID nineteen update. Uh, those that typically would update, anything going on there?
Yes, the, the main thing is continuing to learn as much as we can about the American, um, Rescue Plan Act and, and those funds that will be coming our way later this year. And then, um, half of them actually will come this year, and I believe the second half next year. So continuing to learn more about how we can utilize those funds, and that will be a ongoing discussion um, with the board here going forward. One thing I did learn at a, a League of Wisconsin Municipalities meeting um, last week, they invited Baker Tilly to come and, and talk about the, um, the funds. And one of their, one of their main recommendations is that we make sure we keep the money out of our general fund and that we have a segregated fund that's, um, created specifically for this grant money. Uh, that'll, that'll be important, uh, down the road if there's ever an audit on these uh, grant funds and, and also, um, the use of these dollars is uh, not to be used on operations, and that's for the most part what our general fund is. So it's a good practice to keep it out of that. And, and, um, part of the contingency on receiving the second half of these funds is that your municipality uh, use the funds appropriately. So i- if you, there, there's always a chance if you don't do things correctly the first time around that you, that there's a chance that you may not get the second half of the fund. So anyway, we're doing our, doing our best to dot our i's and cross our t's on this and, and we'll keep learning more. That's all I have for now.
All right. Thanks, Matt. Uh, any others have anything, um, that they need to share? I won't call on anybody, but if you do, you know, raise your hand. I'm muted.
I would like to, um, say thank you so much, guys, for, I know it's not really a COVID thing, but it's been really great to serve with you guys on the board. Um, I have complete full confidence in, in this board, and I'm very, very excited to see where the Village of Cottage Grove comes from here or goes from here, because, um, I know it's in very, very good hands. So thank you for, um, thank you for the time that I've had with you guys. I, I feel like we've gotten a lot of good things accomplished.
Thanks for the service. Appreciate it.
Yeah.
Thanks for probably did, Jeff.
Thanks.
Once again, Jeff, you jumped the gun.
Raise your hand.
I said you jumped the gun. I was gonna give you a big, uh, hurrah at the end, but that, okay.
Heard you say no means or whatever.
No, 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 no. Uh, yes, recognizing your services, as was said, um, it is a lot of time and certainly appreciate, you know, everything that you've done. And it's been, I think I speak for all the other board members. It's been great working with you on the various committees and everything. So, um, you can tell in your passion every time you're involved in something, it's, it exudes. So, um, we're gonna miss you. But, um,
Thank you.
There are committee member assignments available, so I will be calling you.
All right, I'll be around.
It's, it would be, I, I believe Jeff, this was in the record at CDA, that, that you kind of left it out there that you might be interested in continuing there.
Yeah, yeah. It's a citizen number, yes.
Thanks, Matt.
Yep.
All right. Um, with that, then we'll move on to the next item is update from Melissa regarding, uh, communications with the Cottage Grove Fire Department. Um, there's been a lot going on and gotten, uh, some of that through Matt, uh, but there's a lot more that's been, been going on. And certainly appreciate all the time that Melissa's been putting in that would make sure that the communication is, 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 is as good as it can be. And, um, finding out already with the, uh, some, a number of things that were brought up, we've already been able to address, uh, as we, you know, take them on. So Melissa, with that introduction, please, uh, feel free to take it over.
What more is there to say now?
I think that's funny.
Thanks, John. Uh, yeah, there has been a lot of communication with the chief this past week, which I really appreciate. Um, and we were able to address some of the, um, things that he had brought up. One, if, if you read all the emails. Um, but one is the two percent fire dues. I really appreciate that Matt and Deb, uh, our treasurer, has been working on putting something in place, uh, that, that will satisfy, um, his concerns on that. He brought that up last year and it's, it's a little different because how, because with the town handling the finances, it's a little different for the village. So we're working on something that satisfies that. Um, Lisa was able to add the, um, Deer Grove EMS and Cottage Grove Fire Department in a different space on our website today under departments, just so they're more, um, readily found on our website. Aaron and Matt have been working together to put a form for the fire department to use, um, that makes it, um, easier for us to all understand the, the fire department's formal recommendations on developments. Um, and I, I don't, the, on my way home today, I saw some yard signs that said, we support Cottage Grove Fire Department. And so, uh, I haven't been able to look into that, but I would like one for my yard because I appreciate all that the fire department does. And so, um, I also hope that the, uh, that we could put those maybe at the village, um, village properties like Village Hall and municipal departments as well. I think that would be great to help show our community that we do support the fire department and all our great volunteers and all the work that they do. I know they put in lots of time and training to help keep us safe. Um, and lastly, I, um, I, I have invited the chief to come to our meetings monthly to help give us updates so that we just know what's going on with the fire department and the volunteers and the training. The chief had extended, um, invitations for any one of us to attend their trainings. Um, and I guess they do it Sunday mornings and, uh, Tuesdays, Tuesday nights, I think. There are some other times in there. So if you're interested, um, you can reach out to the chief and he'll let you know, or I can get that information more specific for you as well. Are there any questions about anything that, from last week, the emails or anything?
Melissa, you're gonna re- reach out to the chief on the signs and how we can get them?
I already did.
Oh, okay, great. Look at that.
I saw this morning when I was out walking the dogs. So I'm like, I had to ask. So I, I sent him a note. I just said, are there any more available? I know that, uh, there'll be folks that are asking about this. And I'd said, I'd certainly want for myself would, uh, would enjoy putting a, a sign in our yard. So, um, I, I asked, and so once I hear back, uh, I will let everybody know.
Oh, the other thing on that, I wonder if it's part of the SAFER grant, um, that helps send letters to everybody in our community to volunteer? I don't know if it's part of that. I can't quite remember, but it was like the SAFER grant provided funds for four years for sending out, um, the letters, changing the sign and, um, um, just outreach to the community. So that might be part of that, but I'm not sure. So, great, thanks.
All right, I guess I'd like to also say thank you to, um, the Cottage Grove Fire Department, everything they do in our community and the support they provide, the safety measures that they take. I, I am a bit concerned and miffed as to why the chief would have a, you know, state his concerns to a community partner and not bring those concerns to us as they arise. Uh, it'd be nice to have a better open communication. I think we started that in the last week and a half, and I hope that continues.
All right. All right. Any other comments? Otherwise, we'll move on to, uh, consider the approval of vouchers. Anybody have any questions, comments, uh, on, on those? Jeff will not miss going through the endless spreadsheets, by the way. Page after page.
And I will not be doing it.
Give us the last motion, Jeff.
I'll make a motion to approve the vouchers, uh, for this, this, uh, this period of time.
That was Dagon.
All right, motion from Jeff, second from Paul. Any, uh, further discussion? Having heard none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Uh, anybody opposed? Anybody abstain? Motion carries. Thank you, Jeff. You won't miss it. Uh, correspondence, um, I've had a few residents talking about a couple of things. Uh, one was cleanup, uh, of the, uh, the gas, uh, shut offs. There's been a few, at least in, uh, the area around Community Park. I don't know if they're elsewhere as well, but JJ's already on top of that, uh, working with, uh, and the, uh, vendor that's dealing with that. So we got a little bit of cleanup to do there. Um, and then we had, um, worked with Sean, or another, uh, resident who had, uh, uh, an issue with a chainsaw and a boulevard tree. So, um, we're sorting that one out. Or Sean's already sorted it out, but I will give the feedback that it is the same as it, what was in the letter. So, um, um, and Sean will follow up with the resident as well. So, uh, that, those are the things I'm aware of. Um, we already plugged the, uh, Abiding Shepherd, uh, event. I think we plugged the pass, but that's actually this Saturday. Uh, Heidi? Uh, Heidi of the Hours or JJ? I could put you on the spot, but I.
Yep, uh, officially one to four, I believe. We'll be setting up our booth around eleven thirty.
So if you want to see the rainbow in its full glory, not attached of course, not working. But if you want to get an idea of, of the size and everything, that's a great place to do that. Um, at that as well as I know there'll be a number of other things that'll be very interesting. Uh, also mentioned uh, the cleanup uh, for the parks sustainability and has put that together. Um, and there'll be uh, gloves and trash cans and stuff, eight each park and uh, buckets labeled. Um, we um, are staying a little bit from what some of the other communities in Dane County have done and for that first day. So that's also going on. Um, all right, cause I'm going to getting to community events. Uh, so anything else that might be coming up that people want to share?
Uh, I have one other to add to that. I have those other things on my list. Uh, but State Senator Melissa Agard is starting an outdoor socially distanced listening session to her in uh, our district. So she will be in, in the email. Uh, listed a number of places she'll be and she'll be in Cottage Grove at Fireman's Park on Thursday, May sixth at eleven thirty AM.
All right. Thanks Heidi. Anything else from anyone else that's coming up real quick? We're just starting to get into a little bit of spring, although it got cooled off this week. But um, things will start to happen a lot more, more now. And for those parents who are sitting out in the rain or other events for their kids, thank you. It's one of the things you do. Um, all right, then we'll move right on to future agenda items. Matt, uh, we're gonna have certainly the normal, normal things, but anything else that you can see that might be coming through?
Yeah, but we, we're officially down to our final two board meet, the two board meetings in May are the last two meetings we have to take action on um, any expenditures for district number five. So we'll have a series of items to cover, to document the um, financial considerations for incentives and, and uh, land deals for the various developments and commerce parks. We, we've done some of those and we'll have a few more hopefully. Um, and then there will be a resolution that I've previously mentioned for, to take the money out of the tit and put into uh, an escrow for the bike path. So we can, we can still uh, take care of that project down the road.
All right.
I don't know if that'll all be at the next meeting, but um, it'll, it'll be at one of the next two.
We can space that out, Matt. It's okay. Go ahead Melissa.
I was just gonna say for our last, for Jeff's last meeting here, we didn't have any closed sessions. So that's a nice farewell to you Jeff.
Thumbs up on that one.
All right.
Thank you Matt.
All right, with that then, uh, last item is adjournment.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Ooh.
That was right on the Colonel Sanders.
I think Jeff gets that one.
And Troy, do you want to second that?
Yeah, I'll second that. We'll give it to Jeff because it's his last time to uh, have the opportunity to do so.
It's gonna be nice to hang out with you guys without having to worry about the quorum, so.
All right. Uh, thank you Jeff. Thank you Troy. Non-debatable. All those in fa- favor.
Aye.
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 Bye everyone.